"A strong and growing economy and cultivating that environment is harder than ever to do." Let me say that again. Having a strong and growing economy is harder than ever, and here's why. Today, I did a tour across our state. At each of the three institutions of higher education, we started at the Georgetown campus of Delaware Tech Community College, and we visited a lot of workforce training programs there for people going out to get a two-year degree or certification, and that was in the healthcare areas of nursing and radiology. We also visited a classroom for auto mechanics, diesel mechanics. It turns out that just about every employer that I talked to in our state that runs big diesel trucks is looking for diesel mechanics. And guess what? Those guys and gals make a good income to support a middle-class way of life. We've got to get our young people thinking about those kinds of careers, and there were a good 20, 25, or 30 people in this classroom at Delaware Technical Community College. I moved up to Dover, and we did a great tour of Delaware State University, and we were presented with a lot of new research programs that they're doing at Delaware State. We met with the Mass Communication Team, which is one of the most highly attended programs at Delaware State University, and toured their facilities. We have been making significant investments in Delaware State University since Tom Corper was governor in the mid-to-late 1990s. And that campus and those facilities and their offerings are better than they ever were, and their enrollment of Delawareans is higher than it's ever been. We have a scholarship program that was created a few years ago called the Inspire Scholarship Program, which pays a significant part of the tuition for a Delaware student to go to Delaware State University. We have a similar program called the Seed Scholarship Program that we work with, with Delaware Tech and with the University of Delaware, again, to support Delaware students going through those programs. It turns out that the most important thing in having a strong and growing economy is the quality of the workforce. We created a new entity to do our economic development activities called the Delaware Prosperity Partnership. It's a partnership between the government agencies and the private sector, and they're working hard to cultivate this environment where businesses can be successful. Turns out that the most important thing that businesses are looking for is a high-quality workforce. And so our efforts in education, preschool through elementary, secondary, and higher education, is more important than it's ever been before. For the longest time, and particularly in this area, in the area where I grew up, along the Delaware River in Claymont, we relied pretty significantly in Delaware on old industrial jobs. When I was running for governor, we had a roundtable with folks to talk about the kinds of things that we needed to make Delaware stronger and Delaware's economy stronger. And somebody said, "We need some new, old jobs." That make sense to you? I knew exactly what he was talking about. New, old jobs. The kind of jobs that the parents in the neighborhood that I grew up in worked in, the industrial jobs along the Delaware River from Claymont Steel into Sunoco into southeastern Pennsylvania, the Port of Wilmington down to the oil refinery along the Delaware River, and our two automobile manufacturing plants here in our state. Those jobs are fewer and far between today. We need to do everything we can to cultivate those jobs, and that's why we work so hard on the partnership with Gulf Tainer to expand and develop the Port of Wilmington. We have an agreement with the company to make over half a billion dollars in investment to create new jobs and to secure those good, old jobs at the Port of Wilmington and the new facility at Edgemore. In order for every child to be successful, we need to make sure that we're giving them a first-class education. And Representative Cook introduced Dr. Blakely, but we also have Dr. Susan Butting, who's the Secretary of Education, who is here, and Darrell Green, who's the head of the Office of Innovation and Improvement, working hard to make sure that every children... And here are the three objectives. Children learn to read from preschool to third grade, and then they read to learn after that. So if they're not reading at grade level at third grade, their prospects after that are not as good. So we need to make sure that all our children can read at grade level at third grade, and we're not doing as well as we need to be doing on that process. So this is one of our priorities, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. Increasingly, science, technology, and engineering, and math is where the jobs of the future are going to be. So we need to make sure that our kids are graduating with proficiency in math. And it starts by being proficient in middle school, and so eighth grade proficiency in math is the second of our main objectives. And then lastly, to make sure that every child, every single one, graduates from high school ready to either go out into the workforce as like a diesel mechanic or as a tradesperson, again, jobs that pay well, and there are high demand in our economy right now, or on to higher education. And that's why it's so important for us to invest in college and making sure that our students are college-ready as well. One of the biggest challenges that we face in Delaware, particularly on the budget side, is the increasing cost of healthcare. There aren't many folks in this room that are getting close to using much healthcare as you get older. I can see we've got a really young crowd out there. Secretary Johnson, I'm just reflecting my own over-60-year-old self on that, respecting somebody who has started to use the healthcare system quite a bit. But most of you, I'm sure, in this room know how expensive healthcare is in our state, and frankly, we don't do as good a job with respect to the health of individuals, and so that's a big priority. The quality, improving quality while lowering or keeping costs from growing at a rate that's unsustainable. Safe and secure communities is absolutely essential to the quality of life in every place, and I'm sure it's not this way out here in the Route 9 corridor. For many years when I was Lieutenant Governor, I worked with then-represented J.J. Johnson and Councilman Jay Street on policing activity in the Route 9 corridor. It was so important for the quality of life in the neighborhoods around that, and I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. And then lastly, making government more efficient and effective. The fact of the matter is that our expenses, particularly healthcare expenses, grow at a rate faster than our revenue. And so we've got to find a way in government to make sure that we're operating more efficiently so we can afford the things that are so important in terms of education and quality healthcare. So next slide, how are we doing? Our economy's pretty darn strong right now. Unemployment has ticked down below 3.8% for the last time in more than a decade. We've created the Delaware Prosperity Partnership, as I mentioned. When I talk to employers across our state, what do you think the biggest problem that they have? And we were down on the University of Delaware campus today, where there was a half a billion dollars of construction going on. Their biggest problem is they can't find the people that they need to do the work. We have the same problem with high-technology jobs. So it's our job in the public sector to make sure that we have a workforce that's trained to be able to do the high-tech and science and technology-based jobs, and the trades jobs that are so important for those construction companies. We modernized the Coastal Zone Act. There are 14 sites that were abandoned and polluted. And so we decided to try to open those sites to redevelopment for those new, old jobs so that a firm would come in, clean up the site, which benefits all of us and the river, and create a development that creates jobs, so the modernization of the Coastal Zone Act. Finally, I mentioned the expansion of the Port of Wilmington. So critically important for the people that have those jobs now and for the additional jobs that we'll create as they expand the port facilities into Edgemore. Somebody said it earlier, there's nothing more important that we do than the investment in our children. Just nothing more important. We can't be successful as a state unless we have that educated workforce. Individuals can't be successful unless they reach their greatest potential educationally. And so this has got to be our highest priority. The first thing we did was we reorganized the Department of Education under the leadership of Secretary Butting. So the department was more focused on helping Dr. Blakely and his people in the Colonial School District than in regulating them and riding herd in a different, less constructive kind of way. And that's why we set up the Office of Education, Innovation, and Improvement to help districts meet their obligations and make sure that all their children are proficient in reading at third grade, math at eighth grade, and graduation ready to go to work or into college. The most important thing we're doing, in my view, in this budget, and we'll talk a little bit about it, is making investments in high-need schools and children from low-income backgrounds and English learners. It turns out that those children aren't doing as well as the rest of the children, and that's just unacceptable. Everybody needs to have an equal opportunity to be successful, and we need to invest in those children and those schools to make sure they're meeting those objectives that we've set for all our children. And finally, we're making progress in protecting our quality of life. We've created the nation's first overdose system of care. We have a terrible problem with opioid addiction. Our Lieutenant Governor's doing a tremendous job leading the Behavioral Health Consortium, and they've come up with a plan, one of the items of which was to establish this continuum of care to increase treatment opportunities for those that are addicted. It's just a scourge in every community across our state. And it doesn't matter whether you're in an urban environment, a suburban environment, in a rural area in Delaware, the chances are that you have this kind of problem. Last year, 345 people died of an opioid overdose. That's just unacceptable. We launched the healthcare benchmark, again, to focus the system on improved quality and reduce costs. And we have an incredible collaboration going on right now with the Family Services Cabinet Council to make sure we're doing a better job in educating our children, particularly in the city of Wilmington, and working with Mayor Prozicki in cutting down on the violence and the shootings in the city of Wilmington. The new chief is making tremendous progress there. So here are some of the investments that we're making. I talked about the budget that we presented before the legislature broke. They're doing their budget write-ups right now, and we have Director of the Office of Managed Budget, I think Mike Jackson, in the back of the room. So when you have your budget questions, Mike is back there, ready for the answers. He's also working with the members of the Joint Finance Committee. It's now the legislators' opportunity to mark up our budget and hopefully approve some of the priorities that we have and do it in a responsible way, and we'll talk about that. I've said a lot about the Port of Wilmington. This agreement with Gulf Tainer actually will result in a half a billion dollars of investment by a private company and not by state taxpayers, which frees up money for other investments in our economy. I mentioned that we have both the new, old jobs in the industrial sector, but we also have to cultivate an innovation economy. And we passed legislation to create a tax credit, an angel investor tax credit, and that's a credit that goes for small companies, mostly high-tech companies, as they access sources of capital. We have a real opportunity presented by the federal tax reform bill that identified 25 areas in our state that they call Opportunity Zones, so there's a tax benefit for individuals to invest in those distressed communities. Some of those 25 are in this general area around the Port of Wilmington, in South Wilmington, around the riverfront area, all the way up the Delaware River to the old steel mill in Claymont, and various communities up and down their state. And lastly, I saw Secretary Cohen is here, the Secretary of Transportation. There's $3.2 billion over the next six years for transportation improvements, including $1.7 billion of that for Newcastle County and $250 million in the city of Wilmington, including the bridge that goes from near where Forley Stadium is to the south side of the river, hopefully opening up opportunities for economic development on that side of the river as well. How many people have been to the new 76ers Fieldhouse? Pretty amazing new facility there in South Wilmington. Great for our field, great for our community, great for all of us. I see some members of City Council are here. Council President Chabaz is here. Thanks for coming, and thanks for the partnership there along the riverfront. Again, nothing more important than improving the schools for all of our children. The biggest and most important proposal in my budget is to provide $60 million over the next three years for what we call "opportunity funding." This is funding that will go to school districts and schools to benefit low-income children and those that are English-language learners. It's not just throwing money at the problem. It's an exercise over the next three years to work with schools and districts and teachers to figure out what it takes to make sure that those children can be successful. And again, remembering what our objectives are. Proficiency in reading at third grade, math proficiency in eighth grade, and then graduation ready to go to college or out into the workforce. So $60 million, $20 million each year allocated to the districts. And as we said, Dr. Blakely's here, to Colonial District in this case. Is anybody here from a district other than Colonial? Or is this pretty much all Colonial? Some Christina, maybe? Oh, Brandywell! So you did a road trip down here tonight. So again, really the highest priority in our budget and a real important initiative for all of us. We're working very closely through a memorandum of understanding, and Darrell is heading that up for our team to improve the Christina, the schools in the Christina School District in the city of Wilmington. That includes Byard and Pulaski on the west side. It includes Palmer in South Wilmington, Stubbs, and Bangor off on the east side. And so we have a plan to recapitalize some of those buildings and to invest in those children in programs to help them be successful, meet those objectives. Again, we lose a lot of kids in middle school, and one of our priorities, as I said, is to make sure that children are proficient in math by eighth grade. And so in our budget, we've included some spending for math coaches while we're making investments in jobs, economic development, in our schools. And then we're going to put our excess revenue over that target into one-time spending, such things as there's investments in higher education and into a reserve fund. So last year, the first thing the legislature did was set aside, at our request, $48 million into this reserve fund. Why put it in a reserve fund? When the economy's softens and we don't have the revenue we have today? If we don't have that reserve fund to get us over that little soft spot, we're going to have to go back to you or to the business sector and raise taxes or cut programs. They're important to children and others in our state. And so we've proposed to add to that $47 million with another 40-some-plus on those $50 million to give us a $90 million, $92 million reserve fund. Responsible budgeting. I mentioned some of these excess resources going to one-time expenses in higher education, in farmland preservation, and land acquisition. Lots of real opportunities to enhance our quality of life and address our priorities in a budget in a real, sustainable, responsible way. I talked about government operating more effectively and more efficiently. We've established a group called the Government Efficiency and Talibity Review. Rick Geisenberg, our Secretary of Finance, who is here somewhere. There he is, in the back, is the chair of that group. And that group is working on a consistent basis to find ways to save money and operate more efficiently. And then lastly, probably the biggest challenge that we face here in Delaware and that the country faces is to reduce the growth in healthcare costs and to improve the health outcomes for Delaware families, taxpayers. We can't be successful, again, as individuals and as businesses unless we meet this challenge. So that's it. That's the state of our state today. The state of our state today in Delaware is strong and getting stronger. And with your help and the help of these members of the General Assembly as we work through our budget, we're going to make some really, I think, important investments to make Delaware an even better place for all of us to live, work, and raise our families. Thank you for coming out tonight, and I look forward to all your questions.
So I have a microphone on this side of the room. My friend Jim on the other side of the room. So just raise your hand if you have a question, and we'll get you the microphone.
So we take comments, too. If you don't have a question, you just want to say, "Look, you should be doing this and not that." We want to hear that as well as questions as well. So lead us off.
Hi, Governor.
Councilwoman.
How you doing?
All right.
Good. Thank you for sharing your vision with us on today. My question to you is this. On your chart, we're strengthening our economy under Opportunity Zones. Who can I speak to about that? In the 4th Councilmatic District, I have at least two communities that I feel as though could benefit from that. Who should I talk to?
So Albert Shields in our office. If you call the Governor's office, Albert can tell you. We have already identified those sites. So the process was each state got down a certain allocation. Delaware being a small state, got 25 of those. And so we were to identify 25 census tracts in communities across our state that would be eligible for these benefits. My guess is they include areas in your district?
Yes.
I don't know off the top of my head, but there are several in and around the city of Wilmington. I mentioned area around the Port of Wilmington. Somewhere, not all of the riverfront, but part, I think, on the south side of the riverfront.
That's correct.
So Albert can give you that information. We are, on an ongoing basis, marketing those sites.
Okay.
The Biden Institute at the University of Delaware is doing some work on those sites as well. So we look forward to working with you with other members of council and the mayor as well. Real opportunities there.
Absolutely. Thank you, Governor.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Paradise from the Belfont area, which is nice to be down here. I've got something a little bit personal. My son's a new teacher at Dickinson High School, third year for him. And he doesn't get paid all that well. And I see a lot of things about education, but how about paying the teachers a little bit more so we get better teachers in the classrooms?
So there are no question about it. There is an increase in salary for teachers in the budget. There was an increase in salary for teachers and other state employees last year. We are, particularly with our agreement with the Christina District in Wilmington, we do, would like to pay the teachers that teach in those schools more. If I had my way, I would pay teachers more. Nobody does more important work in our state than the teachers. Obviously, it's a cliche that they have the future of our state in their hands, and they certainly do. Thank you for the work that your son is doing at Dickinson.
Governor over here. Ebony from Claymont.
Hello, Claymonster in the house. It's my hometown.
Hi, Governor Carney. I'm actually here representing St. Francis Hospital. I wanted to thank you for including Tobacco 21 to your 2019 legislative agenda. That's one of our advocacy measures for tobacco to fight at St. Francis as well as the American Cancer Society, Cancer Institute. In addition, I have a question. You talk a lot about the healthcare spending, and I was wondering, is there any money focusing on some social determinants of health that are causing a lot of our healthcare problems?
So it turns out that we do make a lot of investments in the social determinants of health, and you're exactly right that there are a lot of factors out there that impact negatively, negative, social factors that impact negatively on individuals and a community's health. And Secretary Odom Walker is an expert in that area. We're really, I think, through the benchmark, really going to start to focus on those population health kinds of ideas and the social determinants. And by the way, it's very, those are very important negative factors in our ability to get those children to read proficiently at third grade. One of the things that Darrell's done a tremendous amount of work on is in getting our teachers and personnel educated on trauma and the effect that trauma has on children and their ability to learn. We have a lot of activities going on in schools and districts with teachers and support personnel to help children deal with the trauma that they bring from home and from the community. And those are the kind of social determinants that not only negatively affect those individuals' health, but affect the children's progress in school. Maybe one of the biggest challenges that we have, and I think it'll also be one of the reasons that finding the solutions to making sure that children from disadvantaged backgrounds can meet those proficiency standards is going to be so difficult because you've got so many other factors that are at play there. But we need to get down in there and figure it out. Some schools across our state, we were just visiting Laurel School District, they have doubled their proficiency rates in reading and math in their schools there. A very different situation than some of the schools that we have up here, but it can be done. We just need to roll up our sleeves, put some additional resources to it, work together collaboratively, and figure out how to do it. That's a really great observation, and one that Secretary Odom Walker really brings a lot of expertise to the table and can address issues.
To find a way to make sure that in undergrad education, those who are going into the teaching profession learn how children learn, how their brains function, behave, dah, 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 whatever. There's a lot more to it than just being poor and coming from a family.
Right.
So that's one point.
Couldn't agree more.
The other point would be for the secretary, I'd love to see if we could restore creativity and let teachers teach and let them talk about how testing should be done, what should be done. They are blocked now by curriculum and stuff that we buy, and the test has to be given and standardized. Children don't come in standardized packages. Everybody's going to... And I just agree with the whole community. It doesn't matter to me, but that's the most important thing. The last thing I don't want to say is that there is no higher profession than teachers. I agree with everybody in here that says everything, but I think that, and the secretary knows it because we've talked about it, we have a little group, we should elevate teachers to the level of educational engineers. They're working on your child's brain. Five days a week, seven, well, what is it? Five days a week, $7 a day, 12 years of their life.
It feels like seven days a week. Well, BB, you know more about education than I ever will. And what you said, one thing that you said really struck me. And essentially, it is that, you didn't say it quite this way, is that every child is different. Right? And that's what makes it so hard. Because it'd be easy if we had unlimited resources and we had a tutor for every child. Right? But we have pretty good teacher-student ratios in K to 3. It's a target of 21, 22. And I was in a school this week, and they had 16, 17, 18, and then an 8. But that's still 16, 17, 18 kids to one teacher. So we've got to find ways to be able to, as you say, figure out how each child learns. We had a collaborative. When you focus on one objective, as we have with third grade reading, you can really get down into it.
Yes.
And our reading specialists and our teachers and our instructional leaders have done just that. They've come up with a plan, and it does include teacher preparation at U D, Delaware State University, Wilmington College, and the rest. But we've got to roll up our sleeves and commit to those objectives and get it done.
Governor right back here, Yolanda.
Hello.
Oh, way back.
How you doing, Governor?
Good.
First, I want to say thank you to the 149th General Assembly, as well as yourself, in bringing back the Delaware Prescription Assistance Program for our seniors and our decedent. That's the one thing. As well as, I was hoping that you can give us a little more information, if possible, on the reinsurance program on the marketplace.
Yeah, so the Affordable Care Act was a great thing in Delaware because it provided an opportunity and plans for people that were working every day with companies that didn't provide health insurance. It gave them a place to go. But it didn't do what it did in some of the bigger states, like New York and California, which is create more competition among the insurers so that you get better rates. We had like one or two insurance companies before, and we got one or two insurance companies now. Right? Right? Highmark, because of Shield, and Aetna, and that, and that's it. Right? So as a result, and we're a small state. We don't have a big population to spread what's called the risk, the cost of that, of that population into one, you know, across a lot more people, right? And so if you have an unhealthy population among that group, the costs are gonna be high. So the reinsurance mechanism is a mechanism to help those companies reduce the risk. So we, the state, with, with some assistance from the federal government and a waiver, we would assume some of the deep end risk for somebody that had, I don't know, a premature child, which can cost lots of money, or a long hospitalization, which can cost lots of money. That way, the insurance companies can price it for everybody else a lot more affordably. Right? If that makes sense? So that's the idea. It probably won't drive costs down, but it'll help stabilize costs from going up further on those exchanges, if that makes any sense. We're, we're just not big enough to be able to do it any other way, we determined, although there are other things that we're looking at. So we used to be, say, before the Affordable Care Act, we had 110,000 people in our state that were uninsured. And remember, they're not people that are unemployed, those people generally have Medicaid, right? They're people that go to work every day. They just don't get insurance from their employer. Right? Or they're somebody that's in business for themselves, right? They're a single, so now, after the Affordable Care Act, we're down to probably fewer than 50,000 people that are uninsured, which is way better. It's not, it's not optimal, but it's way better than it was. We think that a program like that will help keep that affordability for those individuals that are on those plans. We'll see. You know, it's, right now, if you're in that market, those rates have gone up pretty dramatically over the first two or three years of the program because there was more risk in that population, more cost, healthcare cost to spread across those that were insured in it.
Hi Governor Carney, my name is Kim Lopez, I'm from Wilmington, and I'm a product of the Colonial School District.
Dr. Blakely, right there, he's been recognized about 200 times already.
Yes.
He's doing a great job, by the way.
So I just wanted to thank you for acknowledging the fact that our low-income students are facing significant gaps in their education, which is leading to many problems in terms of them being able to access college. What I'd like to talk a little bit about is the fact that nationally, the, the conversation has shifted very much to careers rather than college. And in particular, this is impacting our students of color and low-income students much more so than the counterparts. So in the meantime, while we're trying to address these gaps, I'd love to know what we can do to make sure that we have an equal representation of students of color and low-income students going to 4-year colleges after they graduate from high school. Because it's really important that, yes, those other jobs are good paying, but in order to break the cycle of poverty, we need to make sure that they are having equal opportunity to get to college.
So I mentioned a couple of things that we're doing at University Delaware, Delaware State University. And there, the number of Delawareans in both of those institutions is higher than it's ever been. The most important thing we can do is help them afford it, really, and prepare them so that they're ready for that rigor, to get in, right? And, and as it turns out, you know, we are graduating too many students that aren't proficient and ready to go. In fact, I was at Delaware Tech, as I mentioned, this morning, and they have a whole program for remediation of students in math, in this particular case, who weren't ready for the math that they, that they're doing at Delta Tech, let alone at University Delaware and Delaware State University. So we have a council called the P-20 Council that is preschool through grade 20, I guess, college, that's working on just that issue. And we have a goal in our ESA Plan, which is Every Student Succeeds Act Plan. It's a federal requirement to increase those proficiency standards to just address what you're talking about. So it's gotta be a combination of better-prepared students academically and financially capable to meet that challenge of higher ed. But I think, you know, with, with respect to Inspire and the Seed Scholarship Program, that's a really big deal for Delaware students at University Delaware and Delaware State University.
Governor, Mark from Newark?
Hello Governor. First off, I would like to say that I'm very pleased to see that the state's spending a lot, putting emphasis on higher education. Back in 2016, I decided to return to school after 15 years off and went back to University of Delaware so I can obtain my bachelor's degree. I got a bachelor's in organizational community leadership, in which is now the Biden Institute. I'm looking to pursue law school, so I decided to take a couple of semesters at Delaware Tech and major in criminal justice. However, as a non-traditional college student who's older, I have a mortgage payment. One of the problems that I've noticed with Delaware Tech is we rely on our financial aid and student loans to subsidize our income when we're in school. However, these funds are held for over, till more than 50% of the semester is completed. And that, that puts a financial burden on us while we're in school. Other schools such as University of Delaware disperse these funds immediately after drop ad ends, which is typically two weeks after the semester starts. What can be done to make this more friendly for non-traditional students who need immediate dispersments?
Yeah, there's not much that we could do, I could do as governor, and, and members of the General Assembly could do because that sounds in both cases like it's a, a policy of University of Delaware and Delaware Tech. We could use maybe our influence to talk to President Brainard and President Asanas to make them aware of the particular needs of, of returning students like yourself. But that, that is something that sounds like it's part of their kind of regulatory environment. But something that we could certainly talk to them about. One of the, I thought you were gonna follow that up by saying, students like you, and this would be true, are not eligible for a Seed and Inspire Scholarship, which is something that frankly, I hear a lot, and we probably should look. The, the, part of the reason for that is, one of the requirements, there's a GPA and other requirement for Seed and Inspire, right? And so if you're so many years, you know, from graduation, I don't know that they allow them. They don't allow that type, is my understanding. So.
Good evening.
Uh oh. I've done battles with this lady before. She is tough.
My name is Sandra Smithers, and I'm a lifetime resident of the... Also, I am a veteran teacher. And more recently, I'm a coach of teachers with the University of Delaware's Ultimate Roots to Certification. And I am struck by the fact that teachers go into teaching with such sincere hearts and such high hopes. And normally, the novice teachers are given the most difficult classes. That's something that should change. However, the one thing that I see is that there's such a gap between the culture of the teacher and the culture of the children they're teaching. And I do know that teaching is about relationships. You can, you can teach any child, almost, if you have a relationship with that child and if you have a relationship with that child's environment through the child's family. This is something that is not, teachers are not prepared for. When they come out of college, they're often frightened in the classroom. They don't know how to interact with the kids, and therefore, learning stops. And I have the opinion that if we can begin to bridge that gap in education and increase the salaries of teachers, we can begin to make some inroads into the deficits that we see in our kids. Because I lived in a time when, I grew up poor. At that time, all of us were poor. But we came out of school knowing how to read and write and articulate our thoughts clearly. That's not happening today, and that concerns me. And I'm wondering if there is anything that is in the plan to begin to prepare teachers to go into the teaching environments that they're gonna be confronted by?
Well, I couldn't agree more with your fundamental point, which is that the teacher in front of the classroom is the most important part of this whole equation. Particularly with respect to getting children from disadvantaged backgrounds where we need them to be. Teachers of, of higher ed don't have class, classes or work to prepare teachers for teaching in those environments. In some cases, it's gotta be internships. Actually Wilmington University does a pretty good job. They have a year-long internship program that, that is geared towards placing teachers in these environments so that they can develop those skills. The thing that just breaks your heart as you talk to these teachers, and I met with a group just a week ago, and they were out at Etta T. Wilson School outside of Newark, and their students were doing really well. And we sat in a little round table, and more than half of the teachers said that they started their careers at Bancroft. And Bancroft, of course, is, is in the city, it's one of the schools that we're working with. It's just the school with the children that we're, we're talking about. And they spent a few years there, and it was challenging for them. And they decided when they had an opportunity, they would go out to, to, at a Wilson, and they did. And it's, they were there, most of them 10, 12 or more years. So the challenge we have is attracting teachers to those environments in the first instance. In some cases, it becomes the last, the option for teachers looking for a job. And then when they have an opportunity, they go to an assignment that's different. Now, one of the teachers that was there said, "I was there for five years, and I would've stayed, but I got riffed." And she got riffed, I assume because they were, they lost some funding because they're losing students because students are choicing out of the district and going other places. And she said, "I would've stayed if there was some more consistency in the teacher corps, the principal. All these folks are cycling in and out so quickly that they don't develop the kind of rapport with one another, the kind of teamwork, the kind of leadership, and the principle to provide the kind of instruction that's really necessary." And so we're gonna try to put resources to that and find different ways and instruction, BB, to figure out how different children learn to read and all that. But if we don't solve this problem, this is gonna be so much harder. And, and you know, we've tried a lot, I mentioned the student loan repayment thing that was oversubscribed. We gotta do that, and we've gotta do more. But we also have to create an environment where those teachers feel like, hey, this is, I'm really committed to this work. I wanna stay here, and I feel supported in what I do. And by the way, I have some help. I've got an aide, I've got another teacher, I've got low class sizes. It's, we can figure it out, but if we don't figure that part out, it's gonna be hard.
Governor, back here?
Yeah.
Right back here. Kai Robinson from Wilmington? And I'm gonna jump in real quick, we have time for three more questions. So we're gonna go here and then right up front here, and then we're gonna end with Council President Neve Shabaz across the room.
Good evening Governor, I'll try to be brief. My name is Kai Robinson, I have a company called Pro Rank Business Solutions. We specialize in diversity consulting. We're based out of Wilmington, Delaware. For the last three years, we've been working in Pennsylvania with Governor Wolf's administration to help them basically redefine what they're doing in Pennsylvania for small diverse businesses. They're coming off the heels of a disparity study that was just conducted, I'm not sure if you're aware. But our company, our small local Delaware company, helped to drive that statewide disparity study in Pennsylvania. Now, in Delaware, we currently don't have any real goals or, or real program for minority businesses to participate on publicly funded programs. And when I mean a program, I mean a program with goals, like 10%, 15%, 20%, defined percentage. What's going on is, according to the census, 2016, there was about 18,000 companies in Delaware that made the US Census. Of those companies, about 74% of those were purely white-owned, about over 13,000. Now, African-Americans, and, and, and that's right on point because, you know, Europeans, some Caucasians make up about 69, 70% of the makeup of the population of the state. African-Americans, however, who constitute 22.8% of the population, only represented 2.8% of the businesses. Hispanics, who represent 9% of the population, only represented 1.8% of the businesses. So when we're talking about not having gaps in employment, it's because we have gaps in actually black and brown-owned businesses who are gonna go out there and employ our children. All right? And that's really the answer to our education problems, it's the answer to our crime problems. So I was just wondering if Delaware has any plans in the near future to conduct a similar disparity study so that we can create legally defensible goals in Delaware for black and brown businesses?
So the, the answer to your question about a disparate study, we, the last administration decided not to do one. And instead, to set up, establish a DBE program in the council. Like James Collins, who's the chair, I think, of the council, or at least a member of the council. We have plans, each of the, each of the state agencies have goals. I just received the annual report from the Office of Supplier Diversity. It's in our Division of Small Business. Yes, James?
I was gonna tell you that the Minority Women on Business Program is under OME, under GSS.
Right. Yeah. If you talk to Mike, he can give you the rundown on that and members of that council. But there's, I just got a report like this about how the state is doing in various agencies with respect to that. That is a priority for us, and you're right. It, it is an opportunity to address the issue, issues both of employment...
Does he wanna talk up? Because you should give him the mic.
Mike Jackson, put your hand up, there he is. And James is on that council, right? No, I'm... God, he's shaking his head. Talk to Mike Jackson. All right. To your right Governor.
Governor, thank you. My name is Lisa Johnson, I'm here representing a small group called You Matter with the Division of Family Services. And I'm a foster parent, I've been a foster parent for about 21 years in the state of Delaware through various agencies. For the small percentage of children who are in foster care, what resources are being provided for this population of children who remain in care until they're 18? That'll help also make them successful. My second question is, what focuses are you giving in reference to the quality of care that is to be given through the foster parents, for instance, financial support? Because again, these children are remaining in care a lot longer than what is planned. Some of our cases and that we get, you know, will have a three to six months, and the children end up being there three, four years. So what focus is...
Yeah, so I don't know the specifics about what we're doing, I know it's an area of focus for Secretary Manny, I think she's among us tonight. But I do know that we have an increase in the budget for foster parents, which is addressing some of the financial assistance part of it. But we can get answers for you for the question about what's being done in terms of training and the rest of it.
Your last question Governor.
Good evening Governor. First, I want to first always thank you for your continued support of the work of the Wilmington Community Advisory Council and the work we're going into implementing the recommendations and findings for the Center for Disease Control that came to Wilmington and did an investigation on the epidemic of gun violence. We heard a lot of people talk about education and how they're so pertinent to the betterment and growth of our children. And I heard you met, and I saw that you were putting money in for the way to formal. I also heard the memorandum of understanding that we're having with the schools, mainly for the elementary schools in the city of Wilmington. In all of that, we talked about, Mrs. BB talked about the children being holistic, being, being able, each child is, is an individual child. And so we know of the traumas that our young people in the city of Wilmington, I mean across the entire state are dealing with right now. The, could you share a little bit more on the, I think it's with the memorandum of understanding with the Christina School District, not only to have reading mentors, but that our children need that social service support that makes to, makes them, makes them holistic for to deal with the trauma? And the, one of the major recommendations from the CDC was getting data sharing. So that when a child has an issue... that when a child has an issue that we know across the board, all the different agencies that the state provides support to, how do we look at that child's complete need if we're able to provide their support services on a holistic basis?
So let me start with the last one first, and that's the data sharing piece. We've been working on that for over a year, and it turns out, it's a lot more difficult than we expected at the outset, and it's difficult for an understandable reason, and that is for privacy and confidentiality concerns. So different information on students and families can't be shared among agencies unless there's permission given. And so we've been trying to figure out ways that we could do the same kind of thing, figuring out how families and individual students are touched by a number of agencies so we can serve that job and that family better without identifying their name. That's kind of hard to do. So we're working both on doing that, and that is an area that James Collins is working on. I got that one right. And one of the things that we're trying to do is get parents to sign that release, you know, when they enroll their child, so that we can work with them. You know, the whole purpose of it is to help the family, to help the family better and coordinate the services. We have incredible services that are provided by different agencies that don't know about the challenges that that family and that child are dealing with, so we can better educate those children. One of our focuses, we've learned that a lot, you've worked a lot, I know, on after-school programs and keeping children and students, middle school students, involved in constructive activity after they leave school. Well, part of the problem is, is that the purchase of care reimbursement ends at age 10, I want to say. So middle school gets to be an important area for us to focus on making sure that children have something to do, and that's something that we were focusing on, trying to kind of figure that thing out, how to better serve those children. It also goes to the observation that we lose a lot of these children in middle school, particularly not able to meet that mass proficiency. And there was one other thing that I lost my train of... Oh, I know what I was going to say. I think the most important thing that we're doing, well, there are a lot of really important things that we're doing, teacher things, probably the most important. But with respect to the support outside the classroom and in the schools for the children we're dealing with in the Christina School District, is we're developing what's, what we're calling a dual-generation facility. So a parent support facility, and this is going to be at Stubbs, right? We decided on that. So it's going to be a parent support, so you can get labor services there if there's housing issues or whatever the case may be, plus an early childhood center. So we've got to get these children before they get to kindergarten, really get them off on the right foot. And so having that facility there at Stubbs, where we're supporting the whole family, I think will really prove to be an important part of our approach there. But the partnership that we have with you, you complimented me, I should compliment you for that citizen advisory committee is yours, and we're pleased to be able to work with you on that.
Representative Kupchak is on.
Let's thank the governor for being here tonight. I know since we've been in office, we've been working hard, ever since we've been in session and out of session. My civics are here, and I want to thank my civics for being here. Most of all, I thank the diversity of this crowd for being here from up and down the whole Route 9 corridor, but also those from Delphi, those from up in Claymont, because without you all, I can't be here, we can't be here, because I don't call myself a politician, I call myself a public servant, because I am here for you. I just want to make it clear about that. First of all, give yourselves a hand for being this guy. And Governor, thank you. Looks like right now you can take a jumper, but I think I can challenge you a little bit, because I'm going to go and get on Claymont a little bit. Transparency, being about the people, and calls, please call us. Please look up on our websites, I think it's at Netrick, please call us.
Yes, sir. I asked the gentleman, could the governor have 10 minutes to ask questions? By fact, this is the very first town meeting for the new elected officials. It would be applaud that we come here for hour and a half to sit and listen to the governor's make a presentation, and then us not have the ability to ask a question. I am on the governor's commission on correction, I'm the co-chairperson. I know majority of the honorable servants here in the community, I would say, with these questions that needs to be asked to the governor, I'm quite sure he would give us an extra 10 minutes. The other thing is transparency and morality is, the representative just said, "I'm a servant to you, I'm not a politician." It's too long that we see a representative in our society that used a party instead of the constituents that voted that person in. He's a public servant. So it's really important for us to understand that for housekeeping purposes, so that when we say transparency, any program that we ask of our public servants, that they have the same transparency of equality and morality with any agencies and any concerns that we have, they should be able to answer them. So I humbly ask that the governor, who I am on the commission on correction, will give us 10 more minutes. Governor?
I'm happy to stay around for 10 more minutes. I'm the first to leave.
Thank you.
Where's Brother Sessions? Is he here?
Angela Garland, Fifth District, R.D. Chair. I had a question to ask you about, you talked about innovation and the collaboratives that you're giving to get businesses into our state. My daughter goes to early college high school at Delaware State, and I love the program, and I think it's amazing. She's going to graduate high school with an associate's, basically. I would like for you to explore the parameters of when those companies come to you for discounts and tax favors, to also include the high schools on being able to go to those companies and have some experience and some shadowing or something to that effect, because our kids are interested in robotics, electronics, and all those things. But if they don't see something that makes sense to them, then they just know that it's coding and it's math, but they need to see it in action. So I think that it's important that our state looks at fusing that gap. And if they want our tax privileges, then they should want to also encourage our children to want to get into the programs that they can offer.
That's a good idea. By the way, those incentives come with commitments that they make to hire people in our state. And if they don't, then we get that money back. I'm happy to stay. If other people have any questions, but we're finished here as a group. I see some folks that have a question, come on up here and I'll do, and I'll answer that one.
Okay, absolutely, Governor.